I'll call this meeting of the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors to order. Roll call, please, Mr. Peter.
Paul.
Here.
Layland.
Here.
Little. Felka.
Here.
Swirt.
Here.
Please join us for a moment of silence, reflect on today's actions. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll first entertain a motion on the agenda received as proposed or amended. Move? Is there a second? Yeah, there is. We were, I know that the folks from Sults were here today. We were hoping a table till next week. We had just some concerns from City Waterloo that we wanted to flush out a little bit with them first. If that would be all right? If you'd be able to come, would you be able to come next week? Okay. All right, so with that, is there a motion, is there a motion and a second on the agenda? All right, moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right, the agenda is approved. Next, we'll move on to public comments. If there's anybody in the boardroom or online that wishes to make a public comment on something that's not an agenda item, please do so at this time. All right, hearing none. We will move on to presentations. We've got two presentations today. First is the Behavioral Health District. May Hintigan, CEO of MHDS of the East Central Region.
You know how to share?
Yeah. Good morning. It's Hinchin. My name is May Hinchin, and I'm the CEO for the Mental Health and Disability Services of the East Central Region. And with me today, go ahead.
I am Lori Um. I'm the CEO of the Eastern Iowa Mental Health Region.
So we're here this morning just to introduce ourselves, to talk about the realignment for the Mental Health and Disability Service System in Iowa. As you know, the governor announced during her Condition of the State address back in January, her intention to realign the system into Behavioral Health Services in which both mental health or brain health, that we often say, and substance use services are combined into a behavioral health system in Iowa. Thirteen, at the time, MHDS regions and nineteen areas for substance abuse to be combined into seven behavioral health districts. The behavioral health districts will have what is called an administrative services organization, or an ASO, that will be responsible for implementing the services for behavioral health, mental health, and substance use within that district. Since February or March, there have been different drafts of the map. You've probably have seen those drafts. August 1st, the state was required to have the final map of the behavioral health districts identified, and so they released this map on August 1st. And I'm sure you've seen it, but we wanted to have something to reference, to discuss this morning. So Blackhawk County being included in that TAN area, that will be the new Behavioral Health District. There's not a name yet. HHS has indicated to us that they maybe will give us numbers. We're not sure, but so for today, we'll call it the TAN area. So the TAN area is, right now, encompasses six of the counties that are the East Central Region. So the East Central Region in this map loses Bremer, Benton, and Iowa Counties. It includes all five counties of the Eastern Iowa region, which are Scott, Muscatine, Cedar, Clinton, and Jackson. And then it includes Blackhawk and, of course, Des Moines and the Loisa Counties on the way southeast. So there are metrics that HHS has shared as far as how they came about this configuration. You'll see, and you maybe haven't seen before, the map with the population totals. So it's a big district. We have a little over a million people, so we're talking one-third of the state. There are, of course, benefits and challenges within having a district that large. So from the perspective of the administrative services organizations, each district in Iowa will have an administrative services organization. One ASO can apply for more than one district. But, you know, there's different things that are happening all across Iowa in regards to that. With a district of a million people, Lori and I have discussed, we've talked about it with our boards, and we would like to jointly apply to be the administrative services organization of this TAN district. And when I say "we," and Lori and I have talked about this at great length, when we say "we," we mean everybody, right, in this whole TAN area. So this is not a map that any of us even predicted, because it was not one of the three options that HHS had originally released. But this is the map that we've been given. So when it is all of the Eastern Iowa region and two-thirds of the East Central Region, we have decided to work together, to be collaborative, and to apply to be the ASO for this TAN area. That's kind of, that's kind of the context, right, the introduction. We certainly are happy to answer questions. We're happy to try to explain to you what we know. We don't know a whole lot. We know that HHS will release the request for proposals on September 30th. We don't know how long we will have to submit a proposal, but we do know that HHS has to designate or assign the ASOs on December 31st of this year. So on June 30th of this fiscal year, June 30th, 2025, the regions, County Social Services, Eastern Iowa Region, Mental Health and Disability Services of the East Central Region, we will cease to exist. Our Iowa Code Chapter 441, 225(c) sunsets on September 30th. And then on July 1st next year, a new code section goes into effect, 225(a), which is all about the administrative services organizations. We will have, no matter what, from December 31st, when HHS names the ASO, until June 30th to do that transition, right? Figuring out, one of my big things, and Lori can talk to you about her priorities too, is one of mine is contracting authority. Whether or not we collectively become the ASO or not, we want to make sure that people continue to get services, that we have providers who can continue to be paid and that people can receive services. So that contract authority is going to be probably one of our bigger priorities in those six months to make sure that we have that seamless transition, no matter what, for the people who actually get services. I'm gonna stop talking, because I can talk all morning. Anything you want to add?
I just want to say, we have, we come here today to welcome you. You're new to us in terms of our mental health region. And so we were excited to be able to get on the agenda, come meet with you, answer any questions. Hopefully, we can answer the questions you have. We are also going to Des Moines County and Loisa County and meeting with those Boards of Supervisors and welcoming them to the region as well. We're all together in this, and we want to make sure that we're including in having conversations with your providers and with your citizens. We want to make sure that everybody still has the services. As May mentioned, this transition is scary, not only for families and individuals who are receiving services, but for our providers. You know, we want to make sure that they stay whole and that they keep their doors open. It's vital for our communities and our citizens. So, you know, we're excited to be here. And again, we're doing this around our region. We're doing this with the Eastern Iowa region and going before those boards as well, because they need to get to know May. And so we have our show, we're traveling, and making sure that everybody knows us and feels comfortable with us asking questions and just trying to reassure people it will be okay.
So you're meeting with supervisors primarily right now? Or are you meeting with the providers as well, or kind of a mix?
A little bit of both. So supervisors, of course. And then in the East Central Region, we had done a process since the bill passed in May where we had a series of meetings with stakeholder groups, like, what do you need? What are you looking for? You know, what can an ASO do that perhaps the region hasn't been able to do? Those types of questions. And we had the commitment, once the map was finalized, that we would replicate that process in all of the counties. So Lori and I are hosting a joint meeting with law enforcement a week from this Friday to say, okay, you know, like, how do we partner with you best? What, how do we make this work? We really want to make sure that we submit a proposal that is comprehensive to 1,338,000 people and the needs of not just the traditional MHDS providers, but of course, substance use providers, because that is included in the law as well. So we have, we have that set up in a few counties. I don't think we have the substance use ones set up in Blackhawk County yet, but we're working all of that right now, just to meet with people and to say, okay, what do you need and how do we partner best? Lori and I, if you think about the geography of the East Central Region, as well as the Eastern Iowa Region, we both have experience with large counties and smaller counties. And so that, you know, is our priority right away, like, we've got to get to. You guys are the first ones that we visited. Des Moines and Loisa are scheduled, but not for a few more weeks. So we're just like, let's get there and get to know people.
I'm impressed with your initiative, first of all, to be here. Secondly, do you have established relationships in Blackhawk County already?
We do, I mean, we do because of just proximity. We have Bremer and Buchanan Counties that touch Blackhawk County. So we actually already contract or piggyback on CSS's contract. And I see Mary's with us online. She was unable to be here today in person, but I'm glad that she's joined us online. And I told Mary, like, when this map came out, I said, Lori and I are going to be scheduling meetings in Blackhawk County, and we want you to be included, right? This is a collaborative process. This is a transparent process. So, and Mary said to me, those relationships that you already have are great. I'll help you to form the relationships with other providers. So there are several providers in Blackhawk County that we already use and we know. And I just, maybe geographically, not as many, but yeah.
You mentioned some benefits and some challenges. And I was going to say, obviously, that population base is very large.
Yeah.
And so the service needs are going to be very large, so quite a challenge, sure. But we have some good partners in there already.
I think so too. And when, you know, when we have a lot of people, we also have a lot of resources. And that's, the East Central Region is, right now, until June 30th, is the largest region in the state. We have 608,000 people in our region. And so because of that, we're blessed with a very strong provider network. And now, I mean, Lori and I have talked about it, this provider network just grows. And one of the things that we even identified is honestly, the Unity Point Network. There are a lot of Unity Point hospitals and clinics in this TAN district. And so, like, for us to establish network capacity, we're happy about that.
It seems like the provider network is going to be shrinking, though, in these purple and blue regions. Though, if you're putting all these population centers all on the same, we've got almost all the major metropolitan areas of Iowa in this one district. I know you didn't draw the map, but it's a...
I'm assuming there's some intentional...
One thing that HHS staff did remind everybody, the maps and, you know, the TAN district versus the purple and the blue, it doesn't matter where the services are. People will get the service, they'll go to the service. They can go anywhere they want. And so I think we're going to see that, no matter what. People will still come to Blackhawk to get services, even if they live in Floyd or Chickasaw County. They're going to come if that's where they've been getting the service in the past. So it's not setting up fences, per se, you know, sorry, you can't come in. It's just setting up areas where the funding will come to, to the ASO, and then going out to the providers, so.
And this is the map where certain's going to stay, because we have seen various maps. This is it, we're gone for this.
This is it, yep.
Appreciate you coming, Lori, for sure.
Any other questions, Board?
I have a question for you. I mean, and I know, like, boom, right? Like, we sprung this on you, and we're happy to come back. But whenever, you know, the RFP will be out in, at the end of September, maybe mid-November-ish, we will be submitting a proposal. If you have any thoughts now, or, again, we're happy to come back. What do you, as the supervisors in Blackhawk County, what do you feel like you need from an ASO? From an organization that will help to ensure that Behavioral Health Services are available in your county?
Yeah, I think that's something we can, we can share our thoughts with you by email and such. Let's see if anybody has anything off the top of their head.
We need to so much. Yeah.
Yeah, it's a service with, yes, definitely much needed about it. So, yeah, for sure, we're going to have, I would think, and large demand, obviously, because of the population we serve. But how to meet all those needs, it'll probably be something. We're very interested in how you're going to go about that. It's great that you're collaborating for us, but...
You, I know you, sorry, maybe a quick question. You had mentioned law enforcement meeting next week?
Yes.
Is that primarily with sheriff's departments? Is it with police departments? Is it a mix? Sort of, where's that, where is that set now?
It's a mix, yeah.
And is that geographically diverse? Are you having those meetings community by community and just sort of plotting out next week as law enforcement, or is it a centralized meeting?
That's a really good question. When we did this initial process with our nine counties, there were certain groups that were like, we think they're okay meeting together as a big group, and we think this group is okay with Zoom. Law enforcement was one of them, like, they want to do Zoom. They want to, like, they don't want to have to drive somewhere, because they need to be in their county, right? And so, like, let's get a Zoom for an hour. There were some that were like, hmm, these are individual meetings where we go to them. Some, this is a group meeting, but we think it's better in person. So we have a combination. The law enforcement one is a Zoom. So that's a Zoom next Friday. Substance use will probably have the in-person, because their world is changing a lot. Law enforcement, for them, is like, hey, we've been good partners. CSS has been a good partner. How do we keep that momentum going?
And have you got the major departments across the region registered in for that Zoom? I'm assuming?
Yeah, well, we're just sending out the invitation, so, yeah. When we did this in the East Central Region, really good participant, more than I expected from law enforcement, so they're great partners.
That's good, thank you.
Well, and the end of September will be here soon, so when you're talking to...
Don't you, I know it, yeah.
Yeah, for sure. So then, are you meeting too with the agencies and groups that you said? I know you mentioned Mary and CSS. Are there others, like the mental health providers in our community, that you'd be reaching out to as well?
School districts as well, the, you know, more traditional MHDS providers. I've got one scheduled as soon as I leave here with you all this morning, so, yeah. Trying to hit that while we're here. I live in Dubuque, Mary lives in Scott County. So, I mean, like, we came up today and make use of our time when we're here, and we're kind of planning the same when we're in Des Moines and Loisa Counties too.
Any other questions, Board?
Can I ask, and maybe this is too soon to know, about the mental health patient advocates? Is there anything in that law about how those will be handled?
We just had a really long conversation about this yesterday. I could tell the way you were looking. Right now, 229, the Iowa Code Chapter 229 that governs the mental health patient advocates didn't change. The only thing that changed is the language was struck in that 229 about, right now, it says the region will reimburse the county. That was struck, and it says the ASO will reimburse the county. So at this point, as far as like...
Anticipate it'll be similar.
Function and structure of their positions has not, has not changed in the most current law.
Okay, thank you, yeah.
More to come, right? Yeah, exactly.
All right, well, thank you for being here today.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, next, we have a presentation from One City United, Dean Feltes.
One second. Zoom was disconnected. Whatever, it's not disconnected, but they can't hear anything, so.
Oh, no.
Carol, can you check to see if anyone on Zoom can hear? I assume you were talking to Tom?
There's messages on the...
The chat? The boardroom. Everything is configured correctly, so that's concerning. Sorry. Testing, testing, yeah, it's not recognizing it. Testing. I'm sorry, guys.
It's all right. Things happen. Actually, I appreciate it. I'm gonna follow your...
Of course.
Soon as I heard the, I knew my timing was good.
Testing, testing, Dave's picking up now. Testing, testing, Dave's picking up now.
Yeah, it had been working. I thought, all right.
Testing, can anyone hear on Zoom? Please respond in chat.
They can hear.
Yes, they can hear.
All right, thank you. Sorry, guys.
Thank you.
We'll resume momentarily.
So you need to go into... Not where? You're here?
Gotcha.
In One City?
Yep.
Then you can go full screen with this. Is it F5? Just, there you go.
Just down arrow?
It should be left or right or mouse click to go to each one. I think left click goes forward and right click goes back. Left and right arrow.
Got it.
Appreciate it.
Yeah. All right, take it away, Dean.
Good morning, Number One. I'll say...
Black Fox, so that's... There we go.
Perfect. Number One, thank you. Thank you for funding One City and your dedication to the people of Waterloo. It's made a tremendous impact on lives. I'm just gonna jump in, I'm not gonna spend a whole lot of time. But the number of cohorts we've had since, you funded us back in July of '23. We've had six cohorts, number of applicants, we've had 201 that have applied, 144 that actually came to our interview process to get into momentum. Our number of applicants is just increasing and growing rapidly. Term 19 and 21, which are, 19 and 20, which are the last two we've had, we had, we had 76 people apply and 59 that actually came. 76 participants, term 19 and 20, we had 14 in each term. Normally, as you, if you remember last time we talked, we only take 12. And we increased that number just because we have so many applicants and so many people that want to get into the program, that we just decided as a staff to increase that number and take more people into the, into the program. The number of people that are in our program that had SUD, Substance Use Disorder, 65. Number with OUD, 46. The number of graduates who have relapsed since graduating the program are five, which is 11%. See the National Institute on Drug Abuse, 40 to 60% of people who receive treatment for substance abuse, use disorder, relapse. So our numbers are pretty solid. 11% is just amazing. Not unexpected, I guess, just from the feedback we've gotten from graduates who have either SUD or OUD, they've just expressed to us the transformation in their life and what it's done in their life to go through this program and then become employed and get their, that continuing support is just, has really, really changed how they live and changed how they see themselves mainly. So that's, that's the main thing that we really focus on. To get into the recidivism rate a little bit, we talked about that last time we were here as well. Our recidivism rate's still between 2 and 3%, depending on which year we're looking at. As of 2003, it was 2%. The Department of Corrections, IODOC, reports that three-year recidivism rate is 34.3% for the state. Blackhawk County kind of mirrors that, it's pretty close, pretty much the same. I think right now, it's like 35, I think, right now-ish, 35%. So let's just look at ROI for momentum. Individuals with OUD and justice impacted, we had 37 individuals with OUD that were justice impacted that had been previously incarcerated. State recidivism rate, with state recidivism rate of 34.3%, that means 13 of the people that came through our program should have returned to prison. 13 times 40,000, which is the average right now for incarcerating an individual for a year to house them. ROI is $520,000, 4X on our ROI. With your investment of $125,000 per year for this fiscal year, the ROI is pretty fantastic. If I had a business like this, I'd be pretty dang excited. Like I said, we've increased our class size from 12 to 14. We've added two part-time contracted staff at eight hours per week to really, what we've seen is we really need to increase our support long-term. So we've added a couple of peer support specialists, peer support coaches on the back end to really help during class for a few hours a week, as well as after class, to be able to really work with students, work with them as they get into their jobs, and keep that connected community atmosphere going, that supportive services going on. We also hired a support services coordinator to focus on connections to needed resources in the community, which has just been so critical. Resources like Elevate, Pathways, Horizons, Blackhawk Peoples Clinic, Blackhawk Grundy, 12-step programs, just to name a few. Just getting, keep people connected and keeping them connected long-term is what we found is really successful, as people are in recovery. Even as people may relapse, their relapses are short, and they come right back. We've seen a few people relapse, but very quickly, they get back into recovery and get back on the track and get back with peer support people in our, in our programs. So the funding use going forward, we have one more year in our MOU. So we're going to continue with the larger class size. We're, our staff, we have a fantastic staff right now. So we're going to continue with that larger class size. We're planning to increase hours of peer support as funding is available to do so. And that's for during class, after graduation, and also to expand to onsite employment peer support groups. That's, that's an area where, in this environment, in this, in where we're at right now in our, in our culture, many people are in recovery that are working. And there's not much support there for them as far as ongoing group support for them in the workplace. And it can be stressful, it can, it can hamper their ability to be, to work on time, to not fall back into addiction. So we're actually right now in the process of speaking with one of the larger employers in town about doing a pilot program, a peer support program, where we can start to work with employees and help them to stay in their recovery long-term and sustain that recovery and thrive in life, right? That's always the goal, correct? With increasing number of applicants, we're really developing plans to start a second site. We just, our model has always been to embed ourselves in the neighborhood and the community that we serve. Currently, on the east side of Waterloo, so we're looking at starting a second site on the west side of Waterloo, Church Rowish neighborhood would be the best place that we're looking at. The timing of this expansion contingent on One City securing the needed funding that we have for that site. Ongoing needs, like I said, you know, additional classroom site, annual cost of about $172,000. Individual we'd serve in the first year is $172,000. Individuals we'd serve in the first year are 50. Individuals with OUD, and these are all, obviously, we're assuming from our past history, 35, expanded peer support for 20, 25, $38,000. So that's where we're going and that's where we're looking for this next year and what we're planning for. We have many other plans as well, but this is where we're at right now as far as momentum goes and with our OUD participants. What are your questions as we talk about this?
I don't have questions yet, but it's, I think it's really impressive outcomes that you're achieving. It's really appreciated.
Yeah, and we're just so thankful for the support because of that we were able to hire some peer support people. Because of that, we were able to hire a support services coordinator. And that long-term sustained recovery is what we're looking for, for people with OUD. And those are such a key element in that is that that support system, ongoing. You know, a six-week program is never enough to help people. We've always said we wish it was 12 weeks, we wish it was longer. But the thing is, we're helping people that are in urgent need. They need to see things change in their life and they need to have employment. So six weeks is long enough, as long as we have a good, solid support on the backend and continued support long-term to help people really begin to thrive. It takes more than six weeks to develop patterns. And so we know that. And so part of what we really want to do is really increase our peer support system.
Go ahead.
For the population you're serving, what need isn't being met?
The biggest need that we see right now that is not being met is quality housing. Roughly 30% to 35% of our students are homeless. They're either living on a couch somewhere. We have numerous individuals that have come through the program that were literally living in the basement of a meth house when their addiction was meth. So now they're trying to navigate that as well because they have nowhere else to go. Quality housing is, as we all know, is a big issue in Waterloo. To find really quality housing where they feel safe, where they feel comfortable, where they can really start to work on their lives and really make things happen. And the second one, as I've talked a lot about, is peer support. That ongoing support is so vital. So many of us have solid peer groups that we can talk to if something's going wrong in our life, right? And so if we make a change in our life and we don't have that solid, healthy peer support group around us, we have to go out and find one. And that's almost as scary as making changes in our lives, right? So we want to develop a system where they can stay engaged with people that they know and they trust and continue that support long-term as they get employed, as they begin to thrive, as things in their lives are changing. Those are the two really, really big ones. Housing is, we find people jobs. It's, I mean, we have, there are quality jobs out there and we have quality people graduating the program. So that's not a concern.
And that answers most surprise to none of us.
No.
So the employers that you work with, is there a certain group of them that are receptive to the program and what you've got going on and helping and assisting those people?
Yeah, it's pretty amazing, once an employer hires, you know, two or three of our graduates, then they, they're calling us all the time. We do a reverse career fair every term where we ask employers to come in. And some of our employers, it starts at 3 o'clock and we have employers showing up at 2:30 trying to grab people early. And it's kind of fun, it's comical, but it also shows the program and the success of the program and how powerful it is. So, yeah, we do.
How are your transportation services working out?
Working out well. Transporting roughly 25 to 30 people right now. And we have a full-time coordinator that that's what he does, is coordinates the whole program. Just taking that off my plate, which is fantastic. Gives me an opportunity to do other things. So, yeah, it's awesome to watch people that are appreciative of being able to get to work every day on time. Not have to rely on friends or family or a sick coworker who can't show up for three days and they lose their job. And so we've been able to guarantee that we'll get them to work every day on time and it's worked out fantastic. It's, you know, it's just keeping our nose above water and that's the whole plan is to get people to work. The greatest thing we can ever hear from somebody is get that phone call saying, "I'm not gonna ride with you guys anymore." And we say, "Why?" And they say, "I just bought a car." You know, that is the greatest day that we celebrate is when they don't need us anymore.
Do you have, do you have a cutoff period for providing those services to individuals? Or is it just until, as long as they need them?
They have to pay. It's $90 a week, which is $18 a day, which is half what you'll pay any other Uber or any other, you know, nationally-known provider. So there's no cutoff, as long as they keep paying and they can ride as long as they need to ride. We do have some long-term riders and the goal is short-term riders, to get people self-sufficient, that self-efficacy we want to see in their life. So the goal is short-term, but we do have some long-term riders too that it's just part of what's going on in their life, that they just, they need that support. And I tell our drivers, we train our drivers, that we're a support system that just happens to get people to work, right? So we support people as we drive them. The goal is to send them into work feeling better than when they got up in the morning and sent them home feeling better than when they left work. So it's more than just a transportation service, it's really, it's really pouring into people's lives as well.
Do you have any specific locations in mind that you're scoping out in Church Row?
I don't.
Okay.
I don't. There are many. There's a lot of opportunity over there in some very, very good areas where we could really just plant ourselves.
Are you looking at construction or are you looking at?
No, we're looking at just leasing. Why do you have something in mind?
No.
Again, thank you. We'll be back, we'll be back to ask for more support because I know that if I could invest $125,000 and hit a $500,000 return, I'd double down next year. I would invest 250 if I could get a million dollars in return. And this number of $500,000, that ROI number, it'll double next year because the second year they're not incarcerated, that 500,000 doesn't go away, it just adds and it'll continue to add up, add up and add up more and more. So overall throughout the program, we've saved the state and county over $1.7 million in the last three years. So, big numbers, but the real goal is people's lives, the generational impact that it's having.
I know, I'm definitely very happy with our investment in One City and the work that you're doing.
In this term alone, 11 of the 14 are OUD.
You mentioned the ones that have the laps. Is there something, any type of working with those individuals too, to try to get them back in the?
Absolutely, that's part of it and you probably saw it up there, three of the five are already back into recovery. So in that process. So what we see is the lapse time is shorter. When they have the skills and the equipping that they've gotten through momentum, they know where they need to go and who they need to talk to and who they can trust and how to get back on track. And so it's as short as one day sometimes. Yeah, it's, we really wanna, in the future, very soon, we want to start, you know, somewhat of a group setting. We have building two that's 8,000 square feet that's undeveloped space that we can use. So we really want to develop some sort of a peer support area that is people need to come and get in groups additionally they can as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions? We appreciate you bringing us up today.
Thank you so much, I appreciate you guys.
All right, next you'll move on to claims and payments. This is a resolution that the Board of Supervisors approve expenditures, that the county auditor be authorized and directed to issue payments against the various settlements of such claims as allowed.
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded, Michelle?
Good morning, Board. Our total bill payment today is $917,303.45. And of that, $2,976.96 is from the 60-40 fund. We have several larger payments today. We are reimbursing Lynn County for a portion of the Destination Iowa grant. We are the administrator for both their part and our part. So you'll notice there's a payment of $255,297.58 onto them. And we have already received that reimbursement from the state for that, before we paid them. We are paying our annual ART GIS licensing, that amounts $51,980. That's, let's see, Peters Construction, there's a payment for the courthouse renovations, Oh, a couple more. A payment for Casey Lake restoration to Iowa DNR for $37,684.74. And that's it for today. Lots of construction, everything appears to be in order.
All right, Board, any questions? All right, this is a resolution, roll call please, Mr. Veder.
Paul?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Chalka?
Yes.
Yes, the resolution is approved. Next you'll receive project updates from department heads and elected officials.
Good morning, Board, Kathy Nicholas, engineer. Real briefly, paved road system's in good condition. Our contractor is still out, crack filling on a few more miles, probably for just a few more days this week. Gravel road system, the blades are not out because it is so hot and dry, it's just like pushing marbles around, so we are not doing that. Washboarding may develop this week until we get some moisture and we're able to re-blade that. I am happy to introduce to you this morning our new shop foreman, Zach McFarland, has joined us. He will oversee our three mechanics as well as our parts and inventory technician and be the day-to-day supervisor out at our Longfellow shop. He does come to us with about 20 years or over 20 years of experience in fleet management and managing personnel. So we are really excited to have him join us.
Welcome.
Can I answer any questions for you today?
Zach come from the private sector?
He did.
Can you explain just for my, a little bit more on how the heat affects the gravel?
Oh, well, it's simply just drying out. There's not much moisture in the top surface of the gravel road system. And when we're out blading, we send the blades out when there is some moisture to get those fines to stick in with the larger-sized rock.
Okay.
It does allow us to hold that, the new shape of the road with some moisture.
Excellent, the more you know. Thank you. All right, any other department heads and elected officials?
Good morning, Board. Manita Fesmer, HR Director, just a couple of updates. We sent out FYI about nature therapy walks that we partnered with Conservation who offer again to all employees. So the first one was in the spring and it was very successful. So we thank Connie Svoboda for continuing to help provide that service to employees. So they start next Friday, September 6th, and go through Monday, December 2nd. So there's four of those and feel free to check those out. Couple other things, we have a training opportunity for managers coming up September 9th, that is all day. So if you're trying to look for managers on September 9th, you won't find them, hopefully, because they'll be at the training. Board members are welcome to attend that as well. There's gonna be four, or three sessions that we're partnering with Cedar Falls Utilities. It will be held at Cedar Falls Utilities, lunch is provided. And it's dealing with difficult or dysfunctional employees, will be the first morning session. And in the afternoon, it will be employee-free expression, First Amendment and social media. And we'll end with conducting internal investigations in the public sector. So if you'd like to attend that September 9th as a board member, you're welcome to, just let me know so I can get a total count. HR, I'll be submitting a request for HR to attend an annual conference in September 12th and 13th. It's IPELRA, so we do plan to be out of the office those two days, it's a day and a half, in Des Moines, held in Johnston, actually. So that request will be coming to you all. Policy review met a month or two ago, probably two months ago. And one of the things that we were requested to complete was a telework policy. I had members from public health, IT, HR, assessor and recorder sit in on developing that policy and we're ready to bring it forward back to policy review. So Supervisor Schwartz and Supervisor Little, Grant Veder and Mike Trenin, I'll be reaching out to you about possible dates in September to meet. So, other than that, we're good. Any questions?
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Board. Mike Kendrickson, Director with Blackhawk County Conservation. I wanted to give you guys updates on our ARPA projects and also a quick update on Casey Lake. So let me begin with Division 1, the paving of the Cedar Valley Nature Trail. We did our walk-through yesterday. So we are saying that technically, with the exception of the short punch list, we found very little wrong with that nine and a half miles of trail. It's complete. And I could stand here and blaze through this, but this is monumental, you guys. This took 40 years to get this accomplished. And Lynn County's right behind us, so, you know, that 16 miles that got taken care of with the Destination Iowa funds and the ARPA funds, this is a huge thing. And without your support and without you guys allowing us to do that, it would have continued to sit there. We have a lot of other things that take priority. So this is just a really big thing and we are very thrilled with it. So that being said, when the punch list is finished, we will open that trail and it's ready to go. The ribbon-cutting ceremony, which we're sharing with Lynn County, will be October the 4th at the Urbana Community Center at 115. Invitations are being prepped and you will all receive those invitations. So that's going to be a big day for Lynn County and for Blackhawk County Conservation. So we're looking forward to that. Moving on, we've got Division 1 taken care of. Division 2, which is three bridges and some paving. The Miller Creek Bridge, which was the largest of the three, it's been removed. Piers and abutments are constructed. They are bringing in the beams today. So they are moving quickly with that bridge to get that one finished. The McFarland Bridge, just south of King Road. They will probably have that bridge removed, if not by the end of this week, early next week. And so they are moving forward with that one. The third bridge in this division is a prefabbed bridge. It's being built as we speak and they will simply bring it and set it in once the abutments are done. And so they're moving very quickly with that. The paving that's involved with that, which is about another four miles of paving, we are just getting ready to set the pre-construction meeting. Hopefully that will be set next week and we will move forward with that. And they have given us indications that they want to get started on that yet this fall. So the trail is really moving along. Playground equipment, Hickory Hills Park and McFarland Park, the playground equipment has been installed. They will be doing the pour-in-place surfacing next week. When those two items are completely 100% finished, they'll move on to Blackhawk Park and Sigal Cove with the installation of the playground equipment and then following that, the pour-in-place surfacing. So that's moving well. McFarland Park septic system, we're under contract, all permitting's ready to go. Contractor says he will begin that after October the 1st and it won't take him too long to have that project taken care of. And the HVAC system at our administration building, as Mike will attest, it's a little warm there right now. We have no air and we haven't had for a while, but they are working on it and they're getting there. And it's going to be, that building will be so much more efficient and it will be very nice. But Mike and I talked about hanging around here today for a while because it's a beast back there, let me tell you.
It was fine last week.
It wasn't too bad last week. We thought, we really hit this with this weather, you know, and we were opening windows, it was great. That ended pretty quickly, so it's kind of tough. And then lastly, I want to give you a quick update with Casey Lake. I'll preface, I've got a short little video, but I want to preface it with the fact that 100% of the excavation is now complete. And we really maximized that. When they flew the drones, checked quantities, we were about 12,000 cubic yards short of what they originally predicted. And therefore, we had the opportunity to do more. The DNR stepped in at that point and they said, "We would fund another 13,000 cubic yards on top of that if you would like to do that. Folks, when the water's out of the lake, you just do it." So we moved forward with that. So they have completed another 25,000 cubic yards of sediment removal. That lake is going to be an amazing little recreation area when it's finished. So that is completely done. We are ready to move into the fish habitat structure. And so that contractor's gonna go in there and he's gonna start putting that down. We'll have some great stuff to look for that. So if I can pull this off, Corey will help me if I can't, but. Sure, you're on standby, yeah. Media player, share again.
Yep. Hit the blue share button.
Oh, sorry.
And then you can maximize that. Yeah, pull this down, maximize that and hit play.
Okay, and so this is a video put together by Shive Hattery. It's really, you gotta read fast. You probably won't be able to keep up with it, but it is really pretty neat and it's a great little overview of this whole project, so. and it's a great little overview of this whole project, so. Okay. Any questions at all?
I'm just wondering, the sediment that's being removed from the lake, is it being tested to understand exactly what's in there and ensure that there's not any extremely harmful material? But also, for future reference, so we can better ensure we don't have to do this again too soon?
I think, you know, they haven't specifically tested the soil that's coming out of there. It always can be, because it's being placed in holding facilities. And we will, again, once that's all settled, we will plant prairie grass over the top of that at any point they can. I think it's, what you see with Casey Lake is so common with every lake across the state of Iowa. I don't think they would find anything different, and there's really no, there wasn't any smoking gun to say there'd be anything other than what, you know, the high phosphorus level and nutrients that have just, you know, exceeded limits. But no, actually, not actually testing it. The prairie grass should grow fantastically over the top of that stuff, so. And it'll hold it in place, and it'll never, it'll never move, so.
Have you started thinking about what kind of maybe have an opening celebration?
We're, yep, we're starting to think about that a little bit and how we want to do that. We don't know if we'll get, probably, we won't get that pulled off yet this fall. The contractor has until the 1st of March. He's going, it appears he's going to be done well ahead of that. So, we're kind of looking at spring. We would love to see it full of water, and that would be, that would be just the ultimate. And, but he is moving along well, and we should be in pretty good shape. But there's going to be some scars come spring. But yeah, we are in the process of thinking that through and how we want to do that, and we will make that a pretty good-sized event, so.
Is this video for, like, your use when you're out talking or presenting?
It is, it is. And actually, Shive Hattery provided that, not only for themselves, but also for us, for our websites and our social media. We just didn't want it to go out until we got it to you guys. And so, now it'll be on our websites, and you guys are kind of some of the first to get to see it, so.
That's pretty impressive.
Yeah.
We look forward to sharing that with the public.
Sure, thanks.
Exciting project.
Click the red button.
Yeah, take over.
All right, were there any other department heads or elected officials who wanted to provide an update this morning? All right, I will entertain a motion and the minutes approved for the August 20th, 2024 meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Hearing done, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The minutes are approved. Next, we'll entertain a motion on the consent agenda. This will be approved with a single resolution.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? All right, hearing done. This is a resolution. Roll call, please, Mr. Veder.
Leyland?
Yes.
Chalka?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes. Resolution is approved. Next, we'll move on to Section 8. This is agreement, this is resolution, that the service agreement between Blackhawk County and Salt County, or Salt CO, based in Wisconsin, for delivery and management of softener salt to the county jail for an initial cost of $6,657, with an anticipated yearly cost of $30,000, be approved and direct the chair to sign for the same, as recommended by Rory Giving, Facilities Director.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Rory?
Good morning, Board. Rory Giving, Facilities Director. So, how this came about, recently, we have been experiencing some issues over at the jail with logistics with regards to softener salt, whether that's delivery restraints, just availability. We've had a few cases where our brine tanks have actually gone empty because we've been waiting for salt to arrive. That causes a lot of issues for us over there upstream. As you can imagine, in the kitchen, they have dishwashers. If you're familiar with the dishwashers and having softener salt, it can cause issues, especially with the demand that they have. So, that prompted us to kind of go out and start looking at what other options are out there. And we came across this company, Salt Co., out of Wisconsin, and we had asked them to come and do a demonstration for us, for our team. And we quickly realized the number of benefits a company like this can provide to us over at the jail by blowing the salt into brine tanks, bypassing our loading docks, bypassing, having to handle the salt bags manually from the docks down to our basement. We go through approximately 10,000 pounds a month that our staff has to handle. This setup would virtually eliminate that. It would have remote monitoring equipment on our brine tanks, so the company would monitor that. They would actually come in, and once it was triggered, they'd come in, fill it. No assistance from our staff would be needed once the system's put in place. Other benefits, you know, handling that 10,000 pounds a month, working with our safety coordinator, Brad McKeff. He pointed out several benefits that a system like this can provide. Main one being, you know, prevention of back injury. Gave me some statistics, some numbers to look at. Average back injuries can range anywhere from $75,000 to $100,000. So, by putting a system like this in, avoiding to have, having to manually handle approximately 10,000 pounds a month, we feel like this system is a great way to potentially avoid something like that happening. Just the congestion alone in the jail, again, moving it through that jail can sometimes be very challenging. So, again, when we brought this company in to do a demonstration, we just started seeing all these benefits. This was not a budgeted project, although we do have to buy salt. But by going with this route, what we figured, we'd be about $13,500 increase in our operational budget a year. We feel as a department that that's, the benefits certainly outweigh that additional cost within our budget. And so, that's what we're asking for today, is to allow us to move forward with this agreement. I do see this as being a huge benefit for Blackhawk County and our staff, the staff in the jail, and prevention of potential injuries.
Do they service anybody else in Iowa?
They do. There is another county that they service, and the name's escaping me right now, Dan. I didn't write that down, but they have about 7,000 customers. They, we did go out and we looked thoroughly at whether or not there are other vendors in the area or that would service this area. We could not find any. I actually reached out to our water softener people to see if they knew of anybody. They weren't aware of any companies that offer this service other than Salt Co.'s. So, I think we did our due diligence to make sure that, you know, we looked at everybody. There is another company, but unfortunately, they don't offer service in this particular area.
You know what city they're based in in Wisconsin?
Prairie, Prairie du Sac, I believe.
Prairie du Sheen?
No, it's not.
That's Prairie du Sac.
Prairie du Sac, yeah.
Okay.
It's, I believe it's maybe 90 miles away or so, so.
This becomes like a maintenance budget item rather than...
Yeah, so, right now, we're currently paying for salt out of our maintenance supplies, our 1028 line item within our budget. So, this would be, this initial expense of the 66, 57, that would actually, I'd probably look at putting that under our professional services line item to get that system installed. Then, moving forward, as we order salt, we'd put that under our maintenance supplies.
So, the anticipated year, how does that operation work? If they're coming down from Wisconsin, they come down from Wisconsin, I'm assuming, to...
Yes. Okay, so, the system is, if you, it's very similar to what you would see our salt sander trucks, that size, and so, they're delivery trucks. They just, they have a connection on the outside of the building. We've sectioned out a location that makes the most sense. The piping within the building, we looked at that thoroughly to make sure that that wasn't going to propose a problem down the road. And once the monitor signals them that the salt is needed, they get us on their route, and they fill up our tanks.
And that, that back and forth, that route, that's built in, that's factored in? We aren't going to see a mileage fee or something?
No, no, there is a, there is a ongoing fee for the monitoring portion of it. I believe it's $147 a month. I factored that in with that potential $30,000 ongoing cost.
Okay. And if, for whatever reason, we were not satisfied with the service, I'm assuming there's an, I'm assuming there's an out. And the second question is, do we just go back to the bag system that we currently use? Or are we having to...
Again, there's not a lot of companies that offer this service. So, if we wanted to get out, we more than likely would have to go back to using the bags. As far as worst-case scenario, if we wanted to get out of this contract, we would have to pay those monthly fees for the 72 months. So, roughly about $10,000 would be our worst-case scenario. If day one, we didn't like it. You bring up a good point with the bags, though, also. We go through 25, I believe 2,500 bags that otherwise go to landfill. That reduction alone, that was just a huge benefit that we saw as well.
Things you don't even think of.
Yeah.
I don't like putting one bag in.
Yeah.
And this starts immediately, or...
We would schedule, they would install it for us. So, once we give them the green light, then they would order the new brine tanks. Once those are in production, they would start running the piping, the connections outside. I did reach out to the staff at the jail, Tony, Nate, ran this project by them. They thought as well, they thought it was a great idea as well. And they're looking at it more from the logistics part within the building and the congestion that it causes with that reduction. The wear and tear on our floors in the jail, hauling 2,500-pound pallets through the jail and onto our elevators alone, that reduction is huge. Yeah, so, it's, there's just numerous benefits with this setup. Obviously, if we knew this, we would have budgeted it at budget time. But with the challenges that we've been having getting salt here, that's what prompted us to go out and look.
All right, Board, any other questions? All right, this is a resolution. Roll call, please, Mr. Veder.
Chalka?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little? I'm sorry.
Yes. The resolution is approved. I'll be move on to Section 8, Other Business. Item A, this is a motion that the appointment of Josh Bulck as Member of Blackhawk County Conservation Board be approved.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. I didn't do the interview, but I do know Josh, and he's a really well-respected young leader in the area of conservation and water quality in the state of Iowa. So, it's going to be a great addition for our conservation board.
Sure. We had two good candidates, but, and different skill sets. And like I said, his was very strong in conservation, so.
All right, Board, this is a motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item B, this is resolution that the statement of completion and final acceptance of work project LFM 3029-7X-07, bridge deck repairs in various locations throughout Blackhawk County, be approved and direct the chair to sign for the same and authorize, direct the auditor, to make final payment in the amount of $14,901.14, with a total project cost of $96,704.57, as recommended by Katherine Nicholas, County Engineer. And let's see, project contracted at $446,061. The total working days was specified 50. Working days used was 53. Liquidated damages assessed, $0. The contractor, Boulder Contracting LLC of Runde Center, Iowa.
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Kathy?
Hi, good morning, again, Board. As is customary, when we get to a statement of completion and final acceptance, I like to show you some, a few slides of the project, so you see what we're buying. So, I've got about 10 slides here. I'll go quickly through what this project was. It was various types of bridge work on primarily the decks of three bridges throughout the county. The first site was Zeneta Road, which is down in the Hudson area. Zeneta Road over Blackhawk Creek, that was deck patching and new guard rail. Then, moving over to Site 2, that was on Dunkerton Road over the Wopsey River in the Dunkerton area of the county, and that was deck overlay, an entire overlay, and then some beam painting. And then, the last site was on Osage Road, which is closer to the Waterloo metro area. You can see the contract amount, and you just read that, Chris. A 50-day working contract, $1,000 liquidated damages per day. They started last May, May of 2023. They moved right in on Zeneta Road. You can see that some patches were identified by us. Prior to, a year before the contract, the details are put together. Where we, our staff, is out there looking for weaknesses in decks. And we do that by dragging a chain over the concrete deck. I know that seems very primitive, but it is very effective, and it's a very cheap way to look for weaknesses in our concrete decks. Someday, you'll have to come out while we're doing that. Anyway, we identify these areas where weaknesses are. We put those on our plan sets, and then the contractor has a really good idea of how to bid the job. They then go out there, and we identify the, those areas we've identified on the plans, and they are marked out, and then they begin chipping out those weak areas. They do that throughout the bridge deck, and then they patch that with a concrete patch. This deck also involved placing new guard rail. I've talked to you over, over the years about how our, obviously, vehicles are becoming taller, heavier, larger. That has changed the guard rail standards in the United States. So, we are trying to upgrade our guard rails when it is possible, when we need to. You also know that guard rails are very expensive. They can be $60,000 to do this guard rail retrofit. So, that was done on this Zeneta Road bridge. Moving on to the Dunkerton Road Bridge over the Wopsey. This bridge, we knew was in worse condition. We knew that more work had to be done, so we decided to just mill about two inches off the entire deck. And so, you can see that here. Here's the milling machine. Also, some curb repair was called for on this project as well. So, you can see after the milling is done, all these pink areas would be areas that we have determined to be still in poor condition. The contractor has to come back and jackhammer that concrete off around all this rebar. Sometimes, it does result in holes completely through the bridge deck. Then, the formwork has to be placed under the bridge deck. And then, we move on to the deck being poured by our contractor. You can see the slip form, or the paving, the paver there, placing the concrete. And then, it is being cured by specifications with this wet burlap, and then it usually stays wet for approximately five days. It's allowed to cure. On this bridge, the Dunkerton Road Bridge, I showed you some pictures of this about a month ago, but you can see that the exterior being... But you can see that the exterior beams, so the beam on each side of the bridge, the exterior side was in poor condition. It was deemed that we should sandblast that off and then repaint that with a three part paint system on this new, or on this structure. And that was, this work was not done until May of this year. That was kind of the holdup on the whole project, was the contractor being able to paint those beams. And then the last site, similar work on Osage Road on, over Elk Run Creek, just east of Elk Run Road. Again, just a few places that needed to have patches placed. So more concrete, jackhammering of concrete on that structure as well. And then it was identified that just a few areas, the beams were in pretty good condition as far as the paint was concerned. But there were a few areas that needed painting on the bearing plates right here. And so those were touched up and repainted. In conclusion, we, they, our contractor was three days late. We didn't deem that any liquidated damages should be assessed. Liquidated damages are not meant to be punitive per DOT standards. We only incurred very minimal administrative costs, so we deemed that liquidated damages were not necessary. This work is being paid for with the local option sales tax. And I would recommend that you approve this work. It does substantially meet our specifications and that we be allowed to really, release the retainage of the fourteen thousand dollars, nine hundred dollars to Boulder Contracting. Can I answer any questions?
Thank you. All right, Board, this is a resolution. Please answer, roll call, please, Mr. Veder.
Hall?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Druhka?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes, the resolution is approved. Item C, on Silt, will be tabled till next week. So we'll move on to item D. This is.
I think we might just.
Yeah.
Touch on, I know we.
Yeah.
Tabled it, but think, recognizing they've sat here for an hour.
Yeah, yeah.
Just sort of share, we did receive a communication from the city of Waterloo. I think all of us saw that.
I haven't read it. I was gonna say, I saw, it just came this morning, I think.
I breezed through it, it literally came at eight something this morning. And so I think just in the interest of creating a partnership, it made the most sense for us to table it. And we can forward that over, I think, to make sure that you all have a chance to see it. And hopefully, you know, we can create a conversation to make sure everybody's feeling good about the path forward, so. Yeah, yeah.
All right, item D is a motion that the travel request submitted by Roy Giving, Facilities Director, be approved and directed to charity sign for the same. Two hundred thirty one dollars and fifty cents for Brad Metcalf to attend the twenty twenty four Prima Hartley Conference hosted by the Public Risk Management Association on September sixteen, sixteen, or thirteen seventeenth, twenty twenty four.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, this is a motion, all those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Next, we do have the two work sessions coming up. We got on time so far for Mr.
Yeah, I was gonna say, yes, I was, how long do you think approximately? Just because Mr. Garnett had mentioned he needed to be gone by eleven thirty. I think Chris mentioned also, he does, but just having an idea of.
I think we can cover it in ten to fifteen minutes.
Oh, that's good.
All right, all right, well, our first work session is on opioid settlement funds. We're being joined by Caitlin Emmerich, Public Health Director, Ty Burkhardt, the Deputy Public Health Director, and Michelle Wiener, Finance Director.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Ty has, I think, only been here one other time, so I'm just gonna reintroduce Ty, our Deputy Director. And we're just here to talk about the opioid settlement funds work session because we have some new funding related to opioid work that we want to share as well as kind of talk about existing funding and projects that are in the community. So I'm gonna hand it over to Ty.
Morning, Board. I got kind of roped into this because I have done some of this work in Buchanan County prior to my leaving there. So we will just go through a couple of slides. This is probably just an overview, but these are the top twelve strategies that they feel are the highest impact. These come out of the MOU, the Exhibit E. So North Carolina kind of decided through looking, looking through these, that these were the top twelve. Some of these are actually being completed here in the county already. We just heard from One City United, and that's, they're doing some of this work along with Pathways, who's here with us today as a support. So first one is, excuse me, collaborating on strategies. And that is kind of the work that we were doing in Buchanan County, which I'll share in a minute. Caitlin was recently at a conference, and she has some examples from Maricopa County. Number two is evidence based addiction treatment using National Practice Guidelines. Three, recovery support services, so peer support specialists. So some of this work is being supported by other grants, and one of those Caitlin will talk about that the Public Health Department is getting. Four, recovery housing support, so rent and down payment assistance. There's several different levels of recovery housing, so SAMSA has some handouts on those levels and evidence based practices. Employment related services, One City United is doing that. The next slide is early intervention, so Pathways is doing a lot of prevention work in the K twelve schools. Some of this is being supported by grants that we'll talk about today. Naloxone distribution, some of that is going on in the county through grants through Pathways for like EMS and law enforcement. Lynn County is using some of their opioid settlement funds for vending machines. They have seven across the county that any, any person can come and get Narcan out of the vending machines, they're free. Let's see, eight connects persons who's, who have overdosed with probably like a peer response person that will help get them into treatment or give them some resources and referrals. Number nine is not something that we're allowed to do in Iowa. Ten, the diversion programs, Pathways can probably talk a little bit more about the work that they're doing in the jail if you have questions about that. That would also kind of bring us into the addiction treatment for incarcerated persons. So continuing with things like the medication assisted therapies. When a person is arrested, it's important for that person to remain in recovery. And then twelve is the reentry programs. Again, we have some support with that here in the county. Some best practices from other communities. We'll talk a little bit about the Buchanan County approach. So the Board of Supervisors was given the the funds, and they really were not sure how to proceed with that. So they tasked Public Health and our Behavioral Health Person in the county to kind of form a coalition. The two of us sat down with Pathways and determined who needs to be on this coalition, what entities need to be present. So you can see those entities listed there. There's, there's a couple more that were not as active, but I would have to say that this coalition was something that I'm probably most proud of. We had a lot of entities sitting at the table and making that action plan. So the next step was to look at the needs assessment that Pathways had completed prior for Buchanan County and then create an action plan. So we use tools from NACO, and they have a whole toolkit, and developed the action plan focusing on the five areas. So leadership, prevention, treatment, recovery, support, and overdose harm reduction. And those are all in that Exhibit E. The one that we left out was data management. We don't, we didn't have the resources to do that, hoping that the state would use their funding to do the data. But we did incorporate it into some of the other areas. So some of the things that we did were a one time cost, and then, then you're done. So we realized through the assessment that there was not enough like medication, unused medication drop boxes in the county. We had some in Independence, but there was not some in the rural areas. So those were one time costs, so the Sheriff's Office took leadership on and they managed those. And then some of the other things that it's gonna take a little bit longer to do is like the prevention work. And Pathways is doing some more programs in the schools. And then we also recognized that there's a lot of work being done that's being funded through other grants. So it was really nice for all of us to come to the table and recognize what was currently being done and where the gaps were.
And just for the record, Caitlin Emmerich, Public Health Director, I forgot to say that earlier, sorry about that. The other best practice that I had the opportunity to learn about at a national public health conference comes from Maricopa County. I know we don't see ourselves as a peer to Maricopa County, that's the Phoenix, Arizona, greater metropolitan area. However, they, they have done some work that we can definitely use in our community. So a couple of the examples of work that they did was they developed one page best practices for key focus areas. These focus areas align with the Exhibit E that Ty just talked about. And they have, you know, evidence based tools that communities can use, that the work is already done, we can just use it. And they're categorized by a cost as well. I just handed those up. Okay, so you should have a copy of the one pagers in front of you to reference, it's also in your email. And so that's something that I think that would benefit us to look at as an example. Maricopa County also developed tier public health fellowships for some of the work to be done around needs assessments, program development, implementation, evaluation, those kinds of things. They obviously have more funds than than we do, but that's just a model that they use their funds for. And then they developed a regional roundtable to encourage information sharing and to identify needs, which I think is definitely something that we can copy as as a model to really promote collaboration for opioid prevention and treatment. A couple of the lenses they used while they were going through this process was they prioritized a health equity lens, looking at populations that are disproportionately impacted and are most at risk, both for including them in decision making and for appropriate communications. They focused on alignment of services to reduce duplication. They maintained a staffing infrastructure so they could make sure that they were able to implement the programs and evaluate them accordingly to make sure that the intent, which is to reduce the burden of opioids in our community, was actually, you know, being fulfilled. They were very deliberate in engaging all political ideologies. Maricopa County is pretty politically diverse, and so that was one of their focuses. They prioritized evaluation to make sure they were having an impact. And they had very deliberate conversations around funding distribution, how much they kept from the receiving agency versus how much they gave to a community organizations. And I did share the presentation and the one pagers with you all in your emails. If you want to dig further into kind of that example, I was really impressed with the work they were doing. It was a city county partnerships that they highlighted in their presentation. So I, I also want to highlight current programs and services that we have happening here in Blackhawk County. So we have five different funding streams, or five plus maybe different funding streams for opioid prevention work. And I'm gonna just pause, because I'm speaking about Pathways programs, I did give Teresa and Jordan a heads up. So if if I, I gave them full permission that if I misstate something, they can come correct me. So because, because a lot of the work is is being done by Pathways, and then I see Dean left, but One City also is part of, is part of the funding model. So first of all, the County Substance Use Project, this just came before you, so you're pretty familiar with this. But it's a ten thousand dollars from Iowa HHS with a match of thirty thousand dollars with opioid settlement funds to implement the Too Good For Drugs and the Screening Brief Intervention Referral to Treatment Program. There is an acronym for that, but I don't know how to say it. So, so that is one of the projects that is Board of Supervisors, Pathway, Public Health Partnership. A new funding stream that is gonna come to the Board of Health tomorrow, actually, is this Overdose Data to Actions in States. We were invited to participate in this service agreement with Iowa Department of Health and Human Services due to our high risk and burden in our community for opioid overdoses and unintentional, unintentional deaths. And so we're gonna receive a hundred and sixty thousand dollars to implement specific opioid reduction activities. So it's a very prescribed work plan that we had to agree to do, but those opioid reduction activities are evidence based and include health, health system and health provider engagement, public safety partnerships, harm reduction and stigma reduction activities, and community based linkages to care. We are gonna partner with Pathways again on that community based linkage to care through pure, pure support model. We're required to have at least one FTE dedicated to peer recovery support through this grant. So we're gonna tap into sources that already exist, again, that reducing duplication of services. And as I mentioned, we were invited to participate. The data that Iowa HHS is using, which, which resulted in them inviting us to participate in this service agreement is because the populations of focus they're looking at as a state include the, the five bullet points here on the slide. So Black or African American males, age forty five to sixty four in urban areas, people that have recently experienced overdose, people that are experiencing homelessness, this came up earlier today, individuals with a mental health diagnosis, and individuals that have been involved in the criminal justice system. So maybe not surprising, maybe it is surprising, but that's kind of the reason that we're invited to participate. We're one of five counties in the state of Iowa that were invited, and we're one of four that are gonna participate in this program. The next one is the, we call it FR Carp, just because it has such a long name, but it's the First Responder. Gosh, I have to look at it. First, my Zoom sharing is right in the way of the title. First Responder's Comprehensive Addiction and Recovery Project. We, we call it FR Carp. We've had this funding for quite a while in our county. Comes to us through our six year response agreement through Iowa Department of Health and Human Services. We do, again, subcontract most of those funds to Pathways to provide training and distribution of naloxone in our community, specifically for emergency response personnel. The project period for this one does end in September, the end of the month in September, and we've not yet heard if we have, if we're going to have that renewed. The next one.
Caitlin, I have a question.
Yeah.
I was just told yesterday that Narcan is being distributed free by the state. Because as a Hy-Vee employee, I carry Narcan.
Sure.
And in training yesterday, they just told us that the state, they acquire it from the state.
There is an opportunity to do that. I think there's probably more opportunity than actualization of it happening in our community. I think we've, at least at Public Health, identified some opportunities where we can take advantage of that program. This one is separate. This one requires the emergency response personnel to receive the training before they get the naloxone, and it's not available to the general public. But there is, and I don't know, Teresa, if you want to speak to this or all, but there is another program that is for community members that requires some training.
FR Carp, so under, okay. With FR Carp, they have to go through training in order to receive the naloxone that's carried on their rigs. Other, other programs that are out there for naloxone distribution, you do not have to go through the training. We have become secondary distributors of naloxone, so community agencies can become secondary distributors, depending on what kind of agency they are. Part of distributing that, though, does involve that they provide some sort of training to the individual that's receiving a kit of naloxone. That way, they know how to use it appropriately, because if they're not using it appropriately, we're still seeing overdose deaths. And so part of that is still that programming. One of those programs, though, is about to come to an end, and that's the Telenaloxone Program. And so that will no longer exist. So there are some of these that are going away.
I'm just gonna go to the next slide while you're here. Sure, yeah, yeah, please do.
I was just gonna say, in Buchanan, we did take part of that program. So that program, you do have to do some training, it's for the general population. The jail also participated in that. So what we did at Public Health is because you have to have some face to face training, you can't just give it out. So like the vending machines that Lynn County has, they had to use the settlement dollars for that Narcan because there's no training piece in it. But what we didn't, what we did in Buchanan at Public Health is we just had an iPad at the front desk. And so any one of our staff could kind of dispense that if if needed. And you have to just keep a tally and then send that back to the state. The jail also. The jail also participated in what they did on the front side. So every person that wants to use their tablet has to watch videos. So they put the training video on the front side, so anyone who left the jail then could take Narcan with them, so they got the training.
Yeah, the training was quite simple, but it was very important.
There was no defined or prescribed training from the state, so we actually just went out and found some YouTube videos, and they were four to eight minutes, depending on what you had.
Okay, while I have Teresa up here, because this is not a public health-involved grant at all, the state opioid response grant, this is all the way through Pathways and only Pathways. But I just wanted to mention it because it is part of the funding streams for opioid prevention and treatment for the state opioid response grant, and I have the activities listed here. Is there anything else you want to say about this?
I think the only thing that I would mention about the SOR grant is with the realignment of the behavioral health regions, or whatever you want to call them, we have no idea how that's gonna affect our grants come next year. We do have the state opioid response four coming up, we're currently in the two-year three program. So that might affect how you decide to spend some of your opioid settlement funding, because some things may not, that are offered through the SOR grant right now, may not be able to in the future. We just don't know how that's going to go in the future. So that's something to keep in mind when you see that things are available currently under the state opioid response grant, they may not be moving forward. So we provide a number of trainings out in the communities, really educating about opioid use disorder. But also, that grant includes psychostimulants, and so that's something that really doesn't get talked a lot about. But it's because of fentanyl being involved in all substances that we're faced with today, so fentanyl being an opioid.
You know, I always have one question about these opioid settlement funds, and maybe somebody can answer them. I mean, we got millions of dollars.
We will.
We will.
What was that?
How come they never went after the dealers? We got nothing from the dealers, the doctors.
Are we talking about, we're talking about the drug dealers, right?
The doctors.
Well, if I would, well, I'd be speculating at this point because I didn't direct this litigation. It's been a class-action litigation, but my guess is that they were going after the deep pockets. As you know, from your experience in law enforcement, sometimes it's very tricky. Even if a dealer technically is a deep pocket, it's very tricky to get at that money.
What frustrated me is, I was actually involved in investigations of doctors, and they were treated with kid's gloves. It's frustrating.
I've noticed that when, just looking at the litigation that we've had, the named defendants have always been either the manufacturers or the, when they say dealers, they do, they have gone after a significant number of national pharmacies on this. In fact, we've just received additional information recently, they weren't in our area, unfortunately, but of some other pharmacies. I've seen grocery stores, drugstores, Walmart was in there. So it depends on how you define a dealer, but you've seen a lot of different health organizations that have been targeted here. I haven't seen an individual named.
I'm just curious, that was a question that bothered me.
We were just talking about, there is, part of the OD2A funding that is just coming to the county is working with providers about opioid guidelines and prescribing, and so really educating them. I know that that continues to be an issue, just from stories that we've heard. People, you know, prescribers still may be irresponsibly prescribing some of these prescriptions that we know how addictive they can be. So it is a concern, but that is one of the things that the OD2A grant will help in this county.
And then the final funding stream that I just want to mention is, of course, the ones that you're probably most interested in right now and involved in, which are the opioid settlement-funded contracts, both through Pathways Behavioral Services and One City United. And I think that Michelle will kind of get into more about the opioid settlement-funded contracts. But kind of before I hand it over to Michelle, there's just one thing that I would like to encourage is a kind of a recommendation to think about the public health approach in planning in our community for and implementing programs for opioid prevention and treatment services. And so just for anyone that's not, you know, familiar with the public health approach, I have a quick reminder. So kind of what that is, is we define the problem, do a needs assessment, what are the needs that we're seeing in our community, identify who's most at risk, so how can we, you know, best serve the populations that are at most risk? Or who's protected, and how can we strengthen and enhance those protective factors? Then develop intense prevention strategies, that's why we have that, that's why I'm so excited about that list of best practices, because somebody's already done the testing for us. They've already shown to be, for it to be proven ineffective. And then to assure the widespread adoption of effective strategies. And all that happens while we have collaboration across our communities, happening with our partners, with the many people that are involved in whatever public health topic it is, with a health equity lens, looking at who are the populations that are most impacted, and through the evidence of what do we know that works. And so, you know, this is a public health system crisis of opioid. The opioid crisis was first identified as a public health emergency in 2017 at the federal level. And so this is something that we've been dealing with for a while and will continue to deal with for quite a while into the future. And so I'm really excited to kind of work across the system with all of the partners in the community on a approach for solutions.
I'm assuming because Ty's had the experience with Buchanan County as far as the needs assessment, that seems like a critical piece for us.
Yes, and I would say some work has already been done. So part of the requirements through the state opioid response grant is that a needs assessment is a required component to that. So we do already have, you know, something that's been worked on for our community.
The one we've done previously then has had a component of that in it.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. And I'm gonna hand it over to Michelle to kind of talk about the opioid settlement funds.
Do you want to just?
Oh, I can advance your slides for you, yes, I can. Celebrates me after loaded again. So this kind of runs to Dan's earlier question. I started out, we received our first cash during 2023. So by the end of June, we had that 562,000. We received another 600, almost 642. We also spent about 218,000. We've earned some interest, and then I had to fix accruals. So our cash at June of '24 is just over a million. But what I, one thing I want to point out, the payments received, some of those are front-loaded. Some people that were being sued paid several years at one time, or they paid years one and two. One of them paid years one and seven, I don't know why. But they're making it, it's difficult to project what you're going to continue to receive because they apparently have quite a bit of discretion about how much they pay and when they pay it. But we do have funds available at June. I'm gonna go ahead and send it to the last one. Based on information that's being provided to us by the National Opioid Settlement Group, these are the best projections we have today of what we'll continue to receive. Kind of broke it down in five-year increments. We'll receive an average, and this changes every year, but we'll receive an average of the 334 annually for the next five years. After that, it drops down to 234, and after that, down to 155.
So those figures right there are what you project we receive annually, not in that five-year period?
Right, that's annually during the five-year increment. So the total left to receive is that 3.6 million. And as you've, as we've talked about this morning, we've, for '24 and '25, almost, we've committed about a quarter million dollars a year. So if we would continue that quarter million of expense over the next 15 years, those expenses would be about 3.7 million, we're projected to receive about 3.6. And there will be some interest earnings, you know, and these are all guesses right now. I did not apply an inflation factor, for example, to the expenses. So I just wanted to kind of illustrate, if you wanted to continue to provide the support you're providing today, we would have about enough money to do that for a 15-year period. However, if we choose to do more, it might not last the whole 15 years. So Blackhawk receives like three, about 3.3% of the amount that all the counties in Iowa receive. And I believe the counties are getting half, and the state of Iowa is retaining half.
That's correct.
The state has a lot of money that I don't believe they've made. During the legislative session, they did not reach any decisions about how to use that money. So they have a lot of homework to do to figure out how the state will use it yet. I think that's it, what we wanted to share today.
Do you want me to stay up here for questions, or?
Yeah, I'm just curious, recommended next steps that we take as a board?
Say that again.
You recommended next steps that we would take as a board?
Yes, yes, I did, in that public health approach slide. So to my knowledge, there isn't a committee or a group of individuals that are comprised of multi-sector representatives that are coming up with a comprehensive community plan on, you know, how to propose some recommendations to bring forth to you as the Board of Supervisors on what would be the most effective strategies of all of those in that Exhibit E that are allowable, you know, on what best meets the needs of our community based on what we know about our community. And so that is my recommendation for that to be considered.
Well, I like how we're doing it as a board, we have an informal process right now. Because I believe when we set up committees, special interests might, let's say, amplify the funding. You know, as I sit here and think of this funding, and I've been thinking about this since the meeting started, especially with the presentation from One City. Everybody knows I have a concern about duplication of services in the community. That's why I had the questions about the Narcan and how it's utilized and how we acquire it. But also, I'm sitting there thinking about the relationships that we need to nurture amongst the entities in our community. Right now, we do have a funding request right now for housing for people in recovery, coming out of incarceration. And when I talk to the individuals involved in this organization, I keep telling them, you need to establish a relationship with Bob Lincoln and Tom Eekes and Felicia Carter. I was approached recently by Felicia Carter, who would like to utilize some of these funds. And she's got great ideas, she's got a proven track record. So I like what we have with the five members of the board vetting these. But the one thing that I'm gonna do is encourage relationships amongst all these people. It's comical, there's some personality differences amongst these individuals. I don't care, you have to work together for the greater good of the community, put your differences aside. So that's where I stand, that's my goal, and that's what I'm gonna work on.
Yeah, I mean, I sort of echo that. I want to make sure that when we put these dollars to use, and I'm sure you all get this, that every one of these entities and providers come with their own approach. And that might very well hit the folks that we're trying to help in different ways. And so I don't want us to get pigeonholed into, well, this is our provider of choice. This is recognizing that we've got multiple tools in the toolbox. We've got multiple organizations who are trying to provide assistance. I understand that we never want to, this duplication of effort thing is a real thing. I think we also have to recognize that just because one tool can address a problem doesn't mean that it's the only way to do it. And yeah, I think the organizations, even just amongst the two, plus I know that there's more, might be sort of running in parallel paths. But the approach that they provide, and frankly, the comfort and the comfortability from those folks that were looking to help with these dollars is just a little different.
Yeah, and one thing I'll add, I guess, is I neglected to add it, when I was talking about the overdose data to action in states funding that is new, you know, that I mentioned there's a prescribed work plan. One of the components of that prescribed work plan is for the capacity coordinator, which is part of the pieces of the funding, to participate in local, you know, harm reduction and overdose planning collaborations and coalitions. And since we have, you know, a variety of different funding streams that are all aimed at really essentially the same thing, right? Reducing this burden in our community. To my knowledge, the individuals that are associated with those funding streams are not working together on a comprehensive plan. And so that's kind of what I'm asking, is can we work together with all the different funding streams on a comprehensive community plan?
I'm being the public health department kind of leading that effort.
Well, not necessarily leading, but definitely participating, yeah. You know, I think that there's, maybe there isn't one leader, right? Maybe it's co-led or something like that. But that's kind of what I think would be really beneficial for us, selfishly as an organization, and also for the betterment of the community.
Well, and I didn't mean necessarily you take this, yeah, I was gonna say broad-based view. I just meant, as far as it seems to me, like a public health need in the community, and public health being very active in it. And so there's always, needs to be someone that leads, getting the people together, talking with the people, getting the assessment out of the information, and that kind of thing evaluated, so you'd have a lead role, I guess.
Sure, yes.
I think to Dan's point, we do hear folks come up to us with an idea. They know that we've got opioid dollars, right? And so they've got ideas of how to expend, and we feel those, which we should. Leaning into strategic planning, maybe this, taking that approach specifically towards those funds, right? So that we ultimately say, we want to use X amount of dollars towards addressing housing, at least a range. So that we're at least giving some scope to how we intend to utilize the dollars, which might help as folks try to figure out how to, you know, the county can be a part of their solution as they run their organizations to provide the services.
Well, and I think the information would be helpful to all of us. I think understanding then what are highest needs. We might decide to do something differently with it, or maybe more of an immediate need we see we want addressed. But it is something that we've got the information and say, like, okay, this does help us make the decision. So then, when you're asking timing about, like, what is the next step? And how does that go from what you say we have the assessment done to actually having that information available for us? What's the next step?
Well, I think with permission slash encouragement, I'm not sure if necessarily permission is needed. But I guess with some encouragement or a blessing, you know, to gather the community partners that are interested in working in this space and start to discuss, to start to go through that process of the public health approach, right? Like revisiting the needs assessment and, you know, if there's anything that's needed, we could add to it. And, you know, start to go through identifying what the community needs are and what are interventions that could be, you know, appropriately implemented to meet those needs, and then come back with a recommendation for an action plan.
I'm supportive of this, that approach.
Sure.
And do you want, do you want a couple of representatives from the board?
I think that would be good, to have some input. How many and who, that, obviously, that's up to you all. But it would be good to have some sort of a liaison or perspective from.
I was gonna say that liaison already, too.
Yeah, if that's everybody's comfortable with that. And I think one thing we should be open to, I mean, we're looking at, frankly, we're looking at less money than I thought it was gonna be initially. And when I look at, you know, 15 years out, investing that 125,000 now is probably more effective to addressing the problem than having $150,000 spent 15 years from now. And so one thing I want to be thinking about is, as we're getting a little bit more secure in our understanding of how much is coming in and when it's coming in, that we're potentially... in our understanding of how much is coming in and when it's coming in, that we're potentially using from reserves and backfilling reserves with this money as it comes in, so that we can make some more immediate investments that might have a larger impact, because the opioid crisis is now. Hopefully, it's not 15 years from now, because all these steps have been taken, all these things, cracking down on doctors, and, I mean, now we're to the point, people that actually need some of this medication are having a hard time getting it, because we've cracked down so much on it. And so I think that's something we should be open to in our planning, that we might be more effective with the investments sooner than later. All right, anything else for it? Thank you, everybody, for this. All right, next we will move on to our next work session on strategic planning with Ted Garnett.
Hello.
Welcome back.
Thank you for having me. That was interesting. I know Caitlin from, I was just looking at my notes in the back of the room, and we did a strategic plan for Lynn County Public Health, and probably due to her influence, I was looking at where opioid stuff was. Because here it is with funding, and you know what I mean? It's like, to your point, it's time to deal with it now. Well, it was 2017 when they identified it at Lynn County Public Health, and apparently nationally, I guess they follow Lynn County's lead on that one. You know, it was a top, one of their top critical objective goals. So when you look at strategic planning, I think what Linda had said was, I think it would be good for us to have another overview, kind of get an idea of the map forward, and then we can get a little bit more formal in having an engagement letter and scheduling dates and structure. So I wanted to just talk to you a little bit about what that would look like today. But to get in your head what strategic planning is for, okay, is to take what part of your resources are discretionary. That's strategic. Operational is what we call the resources, time, talent, treasure, right? I say, you've got $10, 10 people, 10 minutes. 90% plus of most organizations' resources are and should be consumed operationally. So back in 2017, opioid prevention, opioid settlement funding was not operational, because it wasn't already being done. It was strategic at that point. So I want you to understand, and maybe even going away from today, start thinking about it, because it will inform your guidance and direction of Black Hawk County, to think about where is our resource allocation? Because that's all a strategic plan is. It's really prioritized resource allocation. That's really what it is. It's to take that whatever percent, so I was just happened to be looking at Lynn County Public Health's strategic plan, and I think they had identified, they had 7%, right? So what they were saying when they did their strategic plan was, out of 100%, we have less than 1 out of 10 people, 1 out of 10 hours, right? But we do have some significant amount over the course of weeks and days and months and time, to go do something that wasn't being done before, so that it happens in the future. Everything that starts strategically, okay, in that strategic side, it never gets done. Does that make sense? You don't ever stop doing opioid prevention once you've started. It becomes operational, right? It moves from it was strategic, we didn't have a budget, we didn't have people, we didn't have an approach. So we made it a strategic effort, right? And if it was a priority, we went and worked hard on it. And then it moves over to operational to free up that 7% again, right? It becomes part of the way we work around here. That's what happens if you do it well. So that's kind of how a strategic plan works. Remember the spoke in the wheel that I drew for you guys, with the center is the hub of values, those are important, and outside your mission, and the spokes are your key results areas? So those would be categories of outcomes that we want to try to define for Black Hawk County. These are things that are outcomes we want to have strategically, that would guide the county and then all the departments and all of that, the folks who do action planning to make it happen, right? I kind of wish Linda would have just said to Caitlin, she's saying, I want permission and a blessing, and, you know, she's got these great, like, plans here, it's an action plan here, coalition plan, that's what she's saying, is I want to do one plus one equals 10 with this, and not be redundant, but have many, you know, we always say 100 ways around the table, which was your point, you know, but we want to go under and around, and, okay? I wish Linda would have just said, so, public health is going to lead that? And Caitlin said, well, you know, maybe co-led, you should say, yeah, lead it, Caitlin. You lead it, and then you can step into a co-leadership role, because it's not going to start co-led, right? She's going to have to go create it out of nothing. And you're going to have to help fund it, or whatever Michelle says we got the money for. So that's really a great example, and Travis, you've so, you know, appropriately said, you know, this fits with strategic planning, because this is what is happening here. And you saw strategic planning on their slides twice in other counties, how it got the support. That's how it gets top to bottom, action, because what we hate seeing and what we undo all the time is what we call spots, strategic plan on top shelf. We did a plan, and then I go in and I'm like, oh, well, where's your action plan? Where's your accountability matrix? Oh, we talk about that stuff once, and then you kind of don't do much. I call it inch-deep, mile-wide stuff, you know? So we try to avoid those mistakes. And kind of to your point, at some point, you are going in with whatever needs assessment you have in, and you're going to treat the symptoms, so to speak, with the opioid thing. But at some point, you got to pivot to the root cause, right? When are you going to go after the, when are you going to go after the side that's causing it to even be able to happen? You know, no one gets overdosed if they don't get the drugs to begin with. So how do we stop it at the source? All of that is very intentional, it's what we call strategic rigor, right? Lather, wash, rinse, repeat, lather, wash, and you come around, and every time you go around that cycle, you arrive at a new level of maturity or a new level of doing things, because you got stuff done that wasn't done before, now it's working for you. That's really what strategic planning is in an overview. As far as the logistics of it, and then I'll let you guys answer, or ask me some questions, and I'll answer them, but as far as the logistics, Linda sent me an email, and she said, I wonder if in our first session with you, we need to really just get an understanding of what it is we're trying to get done with the strategic plan. And I said, we actually have a name for that, it's called Phase Zero. Planning to Plan is what Phase Zero is. So we would start, as we do with most clients, with a couple sessions of Phase Zero, structuring what we want to get done with the strategic plan, which is why I have a hard time, I can only give a range for the budget. Because during planning to plan, I find things out, like, what kind of needs assessment or work can we use already that we can just build off of and capitalize on? I don't want to reinvent the wheel or take away some, there's some good stuff on that wall behind you, I'm not so sure how used it is, but it doesn't mean we couldn't use it if we took ownership of it, right? If it's good enough, we will. Or we start with a blank sheet of paper. Those both have different time allocations. Some public organizations that I work with have a CHNA, Community Health Needs Assessment, already done, right? For stuff like she's talking about, right? So if you have your CHNA, and I can take that and embed it into our needs assessment, then we are informed as a board, as far as that department. Then we'll work through how every department has that level of informing our strategy. Because what you want to do, and the thing I will say to you over and over, and it sure makes sense for your role as elected officials, is you want to represent those not present, right? In the planning process, if we have department heads give input, whatever we talk about, you're representing thousands of people that are not in the room. So you want to have what they're thinking in your head. You certainly want to give us what you're thinking, because you're a represented elected official. But I don't want to just hear what you think, I want to hear what you think others think in your district, in your departments. So you're really representing lots of stakeholders, but two really big ones, right? All of the citizens and stakeholders, people who do business, travel through, stay in, entertain, whatever, all the people who interact in your county are who you're representing. So as a citizen, you are probably one, so you're representing those people, too, taxpayers, for sure. But you're also representing all the employees, right? You're representing all of the staff who are going to, because at the end of the day, every strategic plan, whether it's one that I've done for Firestone, or GE, or whether it's a little 14-person welding shop in Cedar Rapids, Iowa, right? Every single strategic plan is executed, oh, you really got to hear this, is executed by the people who don't make the plan, right? You're going to set the direction, and they're going to do the how to accomplish it. They're going to execute the plan. And so we want them to be able to buy in, and so they have to see their thoughts in the plan, they have to feel like there are thumbprints on it. So I love when one of the two of you, or you both volunteered, Dan and Chris, would you like a board member on the coalition? Caitlin's like about jumping out for joy, you know? Of course, yes! I mean, if you guys can participate at some, but you can't be a thousand places. So the coalition, you can be on, then maybe you're something else. You have, how many employees here? How many people do we pay, do you know?
About 400.
Yeah, so we have 400 representatives of this county that are really the people who are making the mission and the vision happen for Black Hawk County. You're just, so we say, the board job is to set the what. Staff's job, execute the how. They are the experts that, now, they may need help or budget or want you to be on a committee, but you just say, this is where we're going, right? And here's our priorities. And most of what we're going to keep doing in the next three to five years is operational. We're going to keep doing what we've always done well. We're not going to stop that stuff, we're not going to stop doing public health, we're not going to stop doing, you know, any of the departments that we already do, we're going to keep doing. It's just, we might have some priorities with the resources we have on top of that to set a vision in place. So Phase One is vision casting. So Phase Zero, Plan to Plan, where we look at all of the stuff we already have, right? It's the needs assessment of all the needs assessments, if that makes sense, right? What do we have, what do we need? Then we say, where are we going to go in the next 20 to 100 years as a county? That's the vision. We cast this, have some challenging thoughts, maybe some debates about things we think we want to do or say we want to do compared to realities, you know? We kind of have to talk about some things that might be a little bit sensitive, like, we have awarded everything to one vendor or whatever, and we need to be a little bit more comprehensive, as Caitlin said, or diverse, you know, like, and, you know, if that was awarded to somebody that you birthed that relationship six years ago, and they've been doing very well on that, you might not really love that discussion, right? If you're the board member that, ah, you know what, we got to talk about that. One of the things that we do is we challenge some who we say we want to be versus who we really are beliefs. So that's the vision casting process. And sometimes we come up with really good stuff, like we can support an evidence-based approach that we are really that, and we want to stay that, we don't want to hurt that strength we have. And then sometimes we come up with stuff we say we think we are, and the evidence just isn't there. In fact, sometimes contrary. And so we have to face that, we're not what we think. So are we going to keep saying it? Are we going to keep saying this is what Black Hawk County wants to be when we said we were going to be this 10 years ago, and we didn't work on it, and then we didn't work on it again, and we still haven't worked on it? So let's either stop saying it, so we gain credibility as a county and as a leader, or let's start putting action. But, you know, you've got two choices, either stop it or start it. So that's vision casting. Phase Two is really the voice of the people, so the VOP. If we've done our job in Phase Zero and One correctly, then we can decide what methods and approaches we take to go out and get intake from various samples of various, this is where we help you represent those not present, because we go get some intake. I have down in my preliminary draft here that will facilitate intake from the Board of Supervisors, from department heads, from key stakeholders, which we will identify, and from the county and the community, probably some one-on-one interviews, some by survey, probably two focus groups, I think, for this size county, that I'll facilitate, and then review some past documents, efforts, assessments, if available. So we'll culminate all that into a consumable product for you over a couple months, that you can now kind of have the voice of the people as much as possible. I'm going to talk every single person in Black Hawk County, but we'll try to talk to representative sample. And that'll move us to Phase Three, which is key results areas. I talked about categories of outcomes, the spokes, what categories do we need to have? What do we already have? What do we need to add? What critical objective goals do we need under those, each of those? So each key results area usually has three to five critical objective goals, okay? We typically have seven key results areas. I've had as few as three or four, I've had as many as 10, so it'll be up to you. But do the math, if we have three critical objective goals that we identify strategically with rigor over the course of seven, now we have 21 critical objective goals for Black Hawk County in the next three years. Great organizations can only accomplish about seven. So we're going to have to, this is where priority resources comes in play, right? Unless you can find us, since we have $10, 10 minutes, 10 people, now I'm going to force you as a board to work through a process that will be like picking which of your kids you love the most. You'll hate it.
Pretty easy for me.
I do have one I can choose of my four that I love the least, sometimes, because he makes, but, you know, at the end of the day, it's hard, because you're going to want to do these 21 things, you're going to want to do all of them, because they're going to be 21 of a top 100 that you've talked about, and you will want to do all 100. So when we get it down to 25, 21 things, I'm going to force you to say, you only have $10. What are you going to work on, this or that? And we will come up with a priority grid matrix, and it will take us some time, and it'll be like sticking toothpicks in your eyes if I do it right. Aren't you guys glad you hired me? This is very great. But what you will come out of is a consensus. You will come out of that with a board and a department head group that pretty much says, yep, that's it, I think we got it, let's go do that. Now, the real work begins, right? So Phase Four is where we do what's called communication rollout and execution accountability. This is the two pieces we typically never see done in most strategic plans. Everybody is like, happy, happy, joy, joy, we did the plan, go team. And then three years later, we are looking at a three-year plan going, what did we get done? And we always got stuff done. We did research on this for 10 years. Non-strategic rigor organizations get three of their top critical objectives done out of 20. What county gets more done with the limited resources they have? The one in 10 years that gets 30 things done, or the one that gets nine things done, right? What county has better wages and benefits, better employment, right? The world of work has changed so much in the last five years. Unbelievable. So when you look at your trajectory and your opportunity to invest your time and represent your stakeholders, this is probably the most single, most impactful thing you can do if it gets executed, which will not happen in this room. You'll lead it, you'll guide it, you'll hold people accountable, you'll look at the matrix, right? But what you'll be charged with as the Board of Supervisors, or whoever gets elected to sit in your seat after you're gone, will be to take this forward and help these folks, set them up for success, all the people, 400 people outside this room, to go do those things that we said was the direction and the prioritization, right? That's what strategic planning gets accomplished, and then that's how you get that exponential return on investment from your efforts. So that's the overview, starting with the big, down to maybe the 30,000-foot view. There's a lot of altitude below the 30,000-foot view, down to execution, under what I just gave you, but I'll stop there, just see what kind of questions you guys have, so we can figure out how to pivot this to a more structured start date.
Well, as you know, we talked about having kind of the meetings, following board meetings, or meetings on Thursdays and different things. The thing seemed like Thursday came to be a good day when we started out. We also were looking at two-and-a-half-hour sessions and things like that. You've kind of encouraged us to do the first, was it the first session a seven-hour day?
Yeah, the first couple, it seems like there's, like, an economy of scope, that if you just hit it a little bit, you forget what you worked on. When I get you back, I spend the first half of the next session recovering what we did in the last session, instead of making progress, so it's a start-stop cost. I prefer we do, seven hours is wearing you out, maybe. So I would prefer we do somewhere in the neighborhood of four hours, four to five hours. Then your brain needs to go digest, and you need to step back and think about and go kind of see how life works. Then I catch you back, and we do another work session, or five hours, and you'll think of things in between to add. And so I think it's good that you have a little bit of homework and thought process in between session to live life, hear it from staff, oh, yeah, and then you make a note, I need to take this strategic planning and talk to the team about it. So those first couple sessions, separated by a couple of weeks, and then that's, those are the Phase Zero, right? After that, there will be future planning sessions, but I think they can be kept to the two-and-a-half to three hours, because we can get, it's almost like, we need to get work done, but then we need to go then do some homework in between. So we can't, if I had you for seven So, we can't... If I had you for seven hours, I'd just be saying like a teacher in high school, "Work in class for the next four hours on the stuff I gave in the first three." You know, you may as well go away and then come back and put your points alight from each Board of Supervisor's perspective into what we call the shared pool of meaning so that we can then shape that clay into the final strategic plan. What we're shooting for is a document called a one-page plan that has your mission, your core values, direction. We're gonna communicate that out. It has all of your critical objectives, even though we won't accomplish all of them in three years, and it has your priorities identified, what we call Tier One. Tier One Critical Objective Goals in Priority Order. I say, "We gotta go work on this for a year. It's not written in cement. So, if you need to change it, if something comes in, if you find that you mis-prioritize something, that is super uncommon. Usually, those top-tier priorities are pretty nailed down, but I did have Cedar Rapids where I did their strategic plan in 2007 and then all of a sudden, the fifth worst natural disaster in the history of the country happened in 2008 and new KRA and new critical objectives called Flood Mitigation and Recovery, right? Had to come in sideways into that plan and take over, you know? Things, we didn't know what we didn't know. So, we had to reprioritize. It's a pen and pencil, right? We can change it if you want to. But that is the direction we go. We will do the rollout. I can't wait until we do rollout communication and a couple of you volunteer to help with that. That's what we're gonna need, is the board actually helping to roll it out to stakeholder groups and getting their thumbprint on it and that's how we build execution orientation in the matrix, right? But that's Phase Four, so...
How many folks do you envision in Phase Zero? Are you looking at just board or are you looking...
Just board in Phase Zero because I wanna get your input and see what you already have command of or what you have available. And sometimes it's not much and we're just starting. Phase Zero, just you. But very quickly, that pivots to Phase One, which is if you don't have answers or have good stuff to feed Phase Zero with, that tells us that Phase One is when we go get department heads and go even wider to community stakeholder groups and intake, yep. And I will re-get information from you in the intake as well. I'll have a one-on-one interview with each of you about the priorities for the county from your seat you sit in and what you see. So, Phase Zero is really just kinda planning for who and how to go get that information from based on what we already have. And then we create a roadmap and then I come. And the question I think you're alluding to is, "How do we determine how many people in intake overall and how do we get stakeholder voice in Phase One?" Well, I think we have to talk about that and then figure it out 'cause we can't probably... I mean, we could go invite all the citizens of the county, but that would be a process. I don't know that...
A little much.
Yeah, you have a law of diminishing returns on that, right? There's a statistically significant sample we can rely on. Other questions?
Does this setup work for Phase Zero? 'Cause I would imagine this room...
Oh, this room, yeah.
This like speaking to us?
No, I'd rather have us around a table.
I agree.
Kinda have some debates and challenges and be a little more comfortable than this. But I mean, if you make me do this, I'll do it. I've done, I've been in worse situations.
I'm gonna figure it out.
I'd rather have a conference room or a boardroom or something. We can get around a table and get you guys talking about the right stuff and assessing what you can assess.
And everybody I think here was kind of comfortable too. And please say if not, but when we talked about your schedule and ours and maybe having, setting that first session or first couple of sessions and doing... But then going maybe whatever dates work.
Yeah, I think we have... There's always, you know, constraints and stuff. And you know, I think it's a balance between... I do think we can plan session to session, you know? Get everyone, bring your calendar. We do that with a lot of teams. Everyone bring your calendar, we'll plan the next one. Sometimes it's out two weeks, sometimes it's out three. Sometimes that's driven by who has what going on in their life and who can be there. Sometimes it's driven on how much homework I'm giving you 'cause you might be like, "Oh, my gosh, Ted gave me a bunch of homework and I have a vacation in here, right? So, I need, we need three weeks instead of two or four." We can do that. We can have a flexible... On the flip side, the balance we have to have is we gotta keep it moving.
Yeah.
We can't lose what we were talking about, thinking about by taking three months off, you know, and then coming back. And then all of a sudden, now it's June of next year and I'm sitting in the back of the room here and you guys are like, "That Ted Garnett, man, he charges a lot of money and didn't get us a plan done yet." And I was like, "Well, you guys wanted four months off in between every meeting." You know, so it's like, we gotta keep it, the balance between progress, you know? But also enough time to perform and have flex with people's lives.
And I think that's what we were looking at too. It was just that setting a schedule right now and saying we hold to that, everything kinda changes. So, you've got something going on in your life too, a new baby we told him about. So, he's like...
He can zoom in in the morning.
Yeah. Yep, that's right.
I mean, yeah, I think, you know, we look at where's the rhythm to keep the progress happening, but also work around, you know, whatever's going on in life, et cetera. I mean, if it's eight months out and we're still working on it, as long as we're not forgetting from session to session what we did and we're working on it, then we need to do... Sometimes senior executive teams will say, "Well, how much exact time is this gonna take?" Same question I asked the heart surgeon. I'm my father-in-law's open-heart surgery. "I read this is an average surgery of about three hours. How long is my father-in-law's surgery gonna take?" And the surgeon goes, "Long as it takes." And I said, "I know, but I'm trying to like figure out hotels and stuff for my family. Like, give me a ballpark average." And he goes, "Long as it takes." And I'm like, "What does it normally take?" And he's like, "Sometimes 12 hours." If that's what it takes, that's what it takes, you know? We wanna do the right job here. So, if we get into stuff... I've occasionally had a landmine that we didn't see going in, where we need to dig in and we need to unbuckle and that takes its own two-month path that we didn't plan on doing. But we would not, we'd be wrong to go forward without digging into that type of a, "Go get more in-depth," and we don't have it. So, if we find out we need to do that, we'll go do it. We'll do what's right for Blackhawk County, right? And that's... But we will start, to your point, Linda, with, I think, two Phase Zero meetings. We'll get those on the schedule, probably four hours each. There'll be a couple of weeks in between for you guys to have some homework and thinking. And then from there, I would expect we'll meter it out based on... There's a window of time in Phase One where I'm talking to a whole bunch of people, including you, but not you as much, right? I'm gonna go do a bunch of other stuff with and for the county that only involves one interview with each of you. So, you only have a two-hour meeting with me for a couple of months worth of time. I have a five-step audit process where I take all that intake and distill it down so it's accurate. But I, believe it or not, in that audit process to be accurate, I actually have to take that stuff and then put it away. So, it actually needs soak time because if I'm just looking at it over and over, I can tend to... I can tend to overstate things or understate them rather than accurately state what's happening. I mean, sometimes you have the same person in a focus group that says... You know, I had this happen a few strategic plans ago. The person was like, "Every question I asked, the root cause in their mind, the thing that we need to work on was Gen X. Gen X is the issue. We have to solve Gen X. Gen Xers are the problem. Gen X." When I looked at my data, I could have taken to that board that Gen X was a huge issue because I heard it 15 times. It would've only been valid if I heard it 15 times from 13 places. I heard it 15 times from the same person and not a single time from any other. So, that just means that one person really needs to work on the Gen X issue in their department or whatever, but the entire county doesn't need to be consumed with Gen X issues when it's not even coming up. So, that's what I have to do and that just... In some ways, it's like the law of the farm. It's organic. I just have to audit, distill, let it rest so I can come back. So, I have to take a week off from it. I can't keep producing the report for you. So, that takes a couple of months, a couple, two-and-a-half months sometimes. So, then we'll come back in and we'll have some good... I call it data. Some of it's anecdotal, some of it's, right, subjective, but we'll have good intake and information for you to then represent those not present to go make your key results, critical objectives. And then you will finally start feeling some progress as we go down that path of prioritizing those critical objective goals.
What kind of advanced work should we be doing before that first Phase Zero meeting?
Yeah.
To make it most effective?
And I will send you an engagement letter and kind of an outline of some homework, but to give you an idea, the thing I'd like for you to think about, because it always becomes a very subjective thing, is what percentage of the resources of Blackhawk County do you think we have? 'Cause if you tell me 1%, which I've heard from some organizations, a couple, versus if you tell me, I had one organization tell me, "We have 37% of our time, budget and available to just do strategy." I said, "You are way overstaffed." If you have, right? So, if, but if you tell me you have 12% versus if you have 4%, we go set different goals. 12%, we can go do a lot more stuff. 4%, we're gonna focus a little bit more. So, think about, just even in your board meetings and stuff, what are you hearing from departments? Are they, do they seem, you know, razor-thin? You know, are we struggling to find resources? Are we, you know... Well, in my resource example that I just heard while I was in this room, I don't know if he's still in here, but the salt co thing, right? One of the things you could think about with the resources is if Salt Co. comes in and pumps that and we're not carrying 2,500 pounds of salt, that's gotta be freeing up how many hours of labor, right? 'Cause they're just gonna pump it into the basement. We did have people carrying pallets back and forth. So, what can we do with that now? We can do something strategic with that two hours a month or whatever it is. So, I want you to think, how much do we have in Blackhawk County compared to what you see in budget and time? And then I want you to think about this. How much of what you've already done here as a Board of Supervisors or already exists here from each department in terms of an existing needs assessment for their top priorities? If I was a Board of Supervisor, I would wanna know what are the top three priorities of each department coming to me? What do they think their strategic top priorities are? Then you guys can distill that down into operational versus strategic and what we wanna build on or add to them. They don't have it already in there. So, what needs assessment do you already have from each department? What are you hearing? What are you seeing? What are they telling you? How much of that stuff on the back wall, which gotta be honest, I usually hate that stuff because it's usually bad. That stuff right there is not bad. That stuff is actually pretty good.
It is.
It's like some B-plus stuff there. And I'm usually walking in and telling people they have D-minus or F-minus stuff. So, I don't... But again, you don't have to take that stuff, but why not at least use it as fodder in your head to carry forward, right? Why not use that to build on at some level? So, how much of that stuff? We're gonna talk about values. They're set up there. I don't necessarily think we rubber stamp them, but I don't think we necessarily summarily dismiss them either. I wanna facilitate you through why and what you would pick if it's not that stuff, how you could build on that. So, that's the type of stuff, Chris, I think, that if you could come in knowing what's already there you wanna build on, what needs assessment you already have that you're kinda conversant in, have command over, and what kind of strategic resource do you think Blackhawk County has, you'll be by 50% of the way of where I usually have to try to get people on. I don't expect you to be there, but maybe you're 20% there, so good question. I will tell you this. I would prefer than that strategic resource is available. Is it 4%? Do not compare notes. Don't, you come to your own independent, right? You come to your own. Don't talk to each other and say, "I was thinking we're at like 4.5%." Come to your own because that makes for a very valuable discussion in Phase Zero when you say, "We have 12" and you say, "We have two," if that's what it is.[1597.02]